Called to order the meeting of Euclid Township Planning Commission Wednesday, January 6, 2021. The meeting is being recorded and the first thing on our agenda tonight is the reorganization. Do I have any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Dennis Martin as chair.
I second.
I have a nomination and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Alright, second would be vice chairman would be Tim Usher. I'm sorry, I apologize. I need to open the, open up for vice chair. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Tim.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Alright, then I need a, any nominations for secretary?
Nominate Nancy Kane.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed? Okay, do we have any other? That's it, right?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay. So, we called the meeting to order. Has anyone had a chance to review the minutes of the December 2nd meeting, 2020?
I reviewed, I reviewed the minutes and I move that we accept the minutes of Planning Commission on December 2nd.
I second that.
Alright, I have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
I.
Opposed? Okay, we're moving right along. And the third, next item is building code ordinance, discussion and recommendations.
Yep, give me one second to reshare. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Tara, would you like me to start that off and then you can talk about the pool, the specifics about the changes with the pools? This is, this ordinance is, is a, is a proposed amendment to the Uniform Construction Code and it's really intended to do two things. One is to update the requirements with regard to pools and fences or alarms to protect the areas around the pools. The, the UCC was recently updated, was now that they're, the state and by incorporation, the township is working off of the 2015 UCC, which changed some of the requirements, including some of the requirements regarding the pools when we had first adopted the UCC. Because we had our existing building code, we were, the state and under the law gave us the ability to carry some certain things over and not carry other things over. One of the things we had carried over were the pool requirements. Now, in light of sort of the modernization of the UCC and the incorporation of specific pool codes, and I think a desire of the township now to accept both fences and alarms and the protection of the pool codes. There's a desire to drop what was our old Euclid Township only requirement and sort of just go along with what the state's requiring sort of generically for everybody. Did I explain that right Tara?
I think so, yes. Um, yeah, this ordinance, you know, in recodifying the chapter 106, it's and removing that one section pertaining to the pool fences, just protect the township more, removes any liability during any inspections that we would come across.
Yeah, the only other thing that we're doing as well is when, when we, when the Uniform Commercial Code, Construction Code first came in and the ordinance was changed, I think in the codification, what you see online, what we have in the books, it, certain things that were supposed to come out, it didn't come out. We're clarifying that. If you look at our construction code now, there's still a reference to Boca being the township's code as opposed to the Uniform Construction Code. So, we just made a couple tweaks to clarify that and to, I think what was originally, to codify what I think was originally intended in the language.
And I would just also add that we do have a hearing on this on, scheduled for Monday night.
You need your motion to recommend the amendment, approval of the amendment from the Planning Commission?
We do, yes.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Do we have any discussion? Anybody or anyone in public have any questions about this? Well. If no questions or comments, can I have a motion?
I'll move that we recommend approval of the amendment as the solicitor has indicated.
I'll second it.
I second, who seconds?
I did.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
I opposed? Alrighty, that went through. Now, our next order of business is the pipeline ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is, this has been in front of the Planning Commission a couple times. At our last, at the last Planning Commission meeting, the, the commission had raised a couple of, well, they raised a lot of comments. I think we looked at some of those and thought there were some tweaks we can make to try and address at least some of the concerns. And so, we, we, again, it's not a, there's a few small changes or I'd say, some of them are, one of them significant, although it's only a single word change. But I just want to go through a little bit of what we changed. In the whereas clause, and it's, it's the third to last, where we clarified that this is, it was, it was already in the language, but we were just clarifying that this is only applying to the subdivision and land development ordinance. And, and the reason that's significant, and it goes to some of the questions that the Planning Commission was asking, it, this is not, we don't presently have this requirement in our zoning code, and although the county had suggested we put it in the zoning code to have it uniformed for any construction, any building, the decision of the township was to limit it to the subdivision and land development ordinance so that it was only applicable in certain situations that, and specifically what the township was looking at was new constructions, you know, new commercial buildings, new developments, new subdivisions along those lines. That's really where they wanted to focus and they weren't specifically wanted to, to focus in on individual houses, individual residence. So, it, it really, it's, that helps to clarify that this is really not when we're dealing with residential buildings. It's not directed at additions, it's not directed at, you know, tear downs and rebuilds. It's really directed at new, new construction and new buildings. And, and if you look at the language of the actual statute itself, when it talks about residential, it talks about any new dwelling units. And again, I know there was some ambiguity and I think the last time I misspoke and said a tear down might be covered because it would be new, but I think, you know, thinking about it further and recognizing that this is within the confines of the SADO, it's really only going to touch on those things that are affected by the SADO. One of the other changes we made, just to clarify, because again, I don't think there was an intention to overreach on this, is when we're talking about educational, institutional, commercial and industrial, all the non-residential type buildings or type, type of properties. We, we changed the language from uses to buildings so that it's really directed at an occupy, you know, a building that's going to be occupied by people. So, it's, for instance, the question was coming up, you know, is what about parking lots? It's not intended to cover parking lots. It's not intended to cover open spaces like that. It's intended to cover buildings where people are occupying. So, those are really the, the big changes from the last time and again, trying to address and take into account some of the comments from the commission.
Mark, would that affect the new schools that are being built at all, or is that?
It could, I mean, I'm not sure about the specific, is there a specific school you're asking about or just in general?
Euclid Hills.
Already constructed and open.
So, it's already constructed, so we'd have to, that doesn't apply to that.
Yeah, and one of the questions, I know there was a question about variances or waivers. Because it's not in the zoning code, this is another reason, I think, the township trying to take into account people's concerns and trying to be, you know, keep the process as potentially streamlined as possible. There's no variance that would require, because it's part of the SADO, a developer could request a waiver from this body and from the board supervisors.
So, so Mark, in the, suppose we have a case now, and Nancy alluded to this in our pre-meeting discussion. How will this affect, for example, the Lyondale Shopping Center? Suppose that situation there goes south and they want to change the use. Where does it, what, what's the township's responsibility there that they can't, they can't have a use, a new use there?
I think, I think the threshold analysis, and it's a little hard to talk about it in a hypothetical, the threshold analysis is if it's going to be, require subdivision, or I'm sorry, land development approval. If it's going to have to come in front of the Planning Commission, and if it is going to require land development approval, then the next question's going to be, are these going to be occupied, commercial, industrial or educational or institutional units? You know, is it going to be a storage unit? Is it going to be an office building? I think those are all the questions that would have to be answered to determine whether or not it's going to apply.
Well, so then, so then, Mark, you, you've already said then that the, there's a pretty big limitation on what could actually be utilized in this 300-foot setback. I mean, the property owner, I don't even know who it is, but there's a considerable investment there. And then, if only thing they can do is have storage units, are they not, are there, is their property value not being adversely affected unless there is an open waiver possibility, which I guess you're saying, is that true or not?
Well, there is a waiver. I mean, it's part of the SADO and with the SADO, but I, I'm, you know, you're, you're jumping ahead to the storage. I, I would think, and again, we'd have to look at the specifics of the construction.
Right.
But if someone's just coming in and redoing, I mean, if there's a unit and someone's coming in and changing the, the inside of a unit, I don't know that that triggers land development and therefore it's not going to really be an issue that's going to have any impact. But, so I think it really, I mean, I think you'd have to have an extreme, and I can't even, I'm just trying to think of an extreme example where you would ultimately trigger land development. Tara, I don't know if you can think of any, if you have a complete demolition of the shopping center?
Yeah, with a plan to rebuild, then that, then you would need land development.
And then they could request a waiver.
So, that would be necessary, right?
May or may not be, I don't want to speak for the board of supervisors or this body, but that may be appropriate, given that there was already a a development of commercial development in that same spot. So, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, again, it's, it's, we try and craft as much as we can. I, I don't think it's the intent of the board supervisors to try and limit existing buildings. I think their intent is when we're dealing with really new, new footprints, new areas where, you know, buildings are going in.
Yeah, but what Tara said a moment ago, a, a tear down and erection of some other commercial use, is that not land development? I guess.
Yeah, it might be, sure. And then that's what I was saying, where you could, then you might need to ask for a waiver.
Okay.
How, how would this affect the gray property, or does it affect that at all?
Well, first of all, the gray property's already got an application, so I don't think it's going to affect it at all. I don't think, I mean, again, this is.
Right, so, so if it wasn't developed yet, if, if they didn't have a plan in place, or if that plan falls through, then, then they, then they would have a problem if, if that developer leaves or doesn't, doesn't follow through.
Where's the pipeline on that, Tara? Do you know where the pipeline on that property is?
Directly diagonal, right through the middle.
Through the middle.
It's Texas Eastern, the same one that runs through our farm. Yeah.
Yes.
So. Yeah, that's just, just as an example, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a few, I mean, there's a, there's a handful of properties, not, maybe not even a handful, there's a few properties that I think are the most impacted, although the, the most impacted properties are either developed or already have applications in them.
Richard raises an interesting question though, so I hadn't thought of.
Well, plus these other properties that haven't been developed yet.
Well, are there very many though, that?
Yeah, I'm looking, there's, I don't know, maybe.
16 properties that I saw in the original thing. Now, they're not all commercial, some of them are residential.
There's only a few big ones, yes, big properties.
There's only a few big ones, there's some small ones.
And again, part of, part of it, just if the pipeline's running, it's like, it, it's going to be similar to any other natural feature that you have your ordinances on, if it's a wetland, if it's a steep slopes, I mean, doesn't mean you can't develop the property. You have to, you know, develop it in a way that, that is within the setback areas.
Yeah.
Does it have to be 300 feet on either side? Could it be 150 feet on either side?
Well, it's, right now, it's, it's 300 feet on each side from the side, from the.
Right now, what we're trying to get, what you're trying to get past, but just to me, just looks like condemnation under the guise of SADO. And I've said that before at the last meeting, nobody seems to really agree with me, but you're taking away the property owner's rights, a hell of a lot of ground, 300 foot on either side, my take on it.
Charlie, I agree with you.
I, I agree. I mean, I sleep within 300 feet of Texas Eastern. Right now, I sleep within 300 feet of that pipe, pipe, right away, not to mention the pipe.
So do I.
Yes, this Dennis's question about the school district, Mark, you're right, part of the school district ground is not developable. It's steep slope and wooded, wet, but some of that, some of it is within that 300 feet either side. And I would think that the school district would object to that.
Well, I can tell you, Downey Town School District has, did, did send a letter. And I'm sure, I'm going to, you know, let them know if this, if we're going to go forward with the, to the board of supervisors, that it is moving forward. But they did send a letter saying that they did object.
That's good. It's good.
You didn't answer my question, is it, could it be 150 feet instead of 300 feet?
Could, could it be? If, if, sure, if the board supervisors.
They want a lot of ground.
Anyway, this, 300 feet is, is the recommendation of the county.
Well, sure, the county wants all the free land they can get to keep green.
My opinion on this is I, I feel, and I'm just going to put this out there, a couple things. I think the 300 feet is a little bit excessive.
Yeah.
The, this is the counties. I, I thought today, who has a turnpike interchange in Chester County besides the Downey Town interchange? No one. We're in the middle of the epicenter.
That's.
You get out to the southern part of the county, 300 feet's nothing. You could do 600 feet, because there's a lot of land left.
Yeah.
Um, I just feel, my opinion, that 300's a little excessive. I think it's great that you guys retweet this and it's a lot of good stuff in there now. I also think that we need to find what's in the pipe, and I said this last time. I don't know where we do it, at the state level or township level, but somewhere, that's, that's the issue, is what's in the pipe.
Yeah.
Okay, I will leave, go for any other comments. I had to say my piece.
Well, we stated that it was new builds, so it wouldn't affect the old builds.
Correct.
But still.
A lot of ground.
Right, and there's a lot of pipelines, a lot of companies. We are the epicenter, if you look at the map.
Yep.
It's a problem.
Mark, are you aware of any communities trying to force the legislature to, to enact more safety regulations?
Yeah, I think a lot of the town, I can tell you, Cato, the Chester County Association of Township Officials, and full disclosure, I'm, I'm on that board, but so, that's why I know a little bit about it. But they've been very active in, in working with the PUC and Sunoco as well, and, and trying to get some safety in. The PUC does, I believe they have draft safety, some proposed draft safety regulations that they had published.
And you know, on weather permitting days, the, the pipeline is surveyed by airplane. And I see it every day that the weather is permitting, it's a little single engine plane that flies along and looks at things. So, they're, they're paying attention, and I'm sure they have pressure gauges to tell them the minute some alarm goes off, the minute the pressure drops, tells them there's a hole somewhere. So, you know, there's, there is some pretty good safety stuff already in place.
Yeah, so one of, I mean, one of the reasons that this issue has been driven in, in, in your community is because if, and you, you talk about Texas Eastern, well, that's, that's a federally regulated pipeline. That's a, what they call FERC-regulated pipeline. And as part of that process, there's a whole National Environmental Policy Act, you know, process that they go through, and they actually look at the siting and where it's going to go. The, the, the pipeline that obviously has been getting a lot of attention in, in Euclid is the Mariner Pipeline Project, which is a PUC regulated, it's not a FERC-regulated. And the PUC doesn't have siting, doesn't generally look at siting. And, and that's been a lot, there's a lot of controversy about that, about whether they should, you know, do they have the jurisdiction, you know, all that stuff. I think there's, there's, I won't get into my opinions or anyone else's opinions on that. But the, so the issue is because these, potentially, right now, these pipelines, there's no oversight for where these pipelines go. The one thing that local communities can do is set a setback. And so, that's one of the reasons that the board supervisor and the township is looking to put that kind of enforcement in place.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to convince you, I just want to lay it, just.
Well, that's new information to me, Mark, because I, I know how, how careful Texas Eastern is with that pipeline. They, they do periodic safety tests, they TV the inside. I, I've never had any reason to fear Texas Eastern, but the, the situation with Mariner is, and it's alarming too, no one needs to think it isn't alarming, it is.
And listen, I don't want to say that, that the, the PUC regulated pipelines are not, no one's looking at them, they are. I just would, specifically with regard to siting though, that's one thing that the state does not look at.
Yeah.
At least PUC doesn't look at it.
Yeah, imagine that.
The problem is that these, they don't tell you what's in the pipe. I mean, these pipes, there's stuff going through there. We don't know whether it's heating oil or whether it's propane. They're not honest and they don't tell, and they change it whenever they want to.
Well, they do change it. I, I will tell you that it can, it can be changed, although I think it, you know, they, you do generally know what's going on. Sometimes it's a mixture and you don't know, like, for instance, you know, Mariner is an example where you have ethane, butane and methane, and it can be, you know, a combination, it can be one or the other, so. You know, you don't, that's in that case, you know, but you know, sort of the general care, they're all hazardous liquids, they're all HVLs, highly volatile liquids. So, you know generally what you've got, whereas in other ones, you might have pure natural gas, pure natural gas. Whereas the, the hazardous liquids are a byproduct of natural gas, like the butanes and the propanes and the ethanes. Did I say, I think I said methane, butane, propane and ethane. They're byproducts and they're, whereas Texas Eastern, I believe, and you may know better than I do, Mel, you know better than I do, but I think that's natural gas.
I do have a couple of questions, I guess from Margaret Quinn, had raised her hand. You guys are taking public question.
I have a question as well, Dennis.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, I guess, sorry, that was confusing. Good evening, happy new year, everybody. Laura Obensky from the EAC. I just wanted to say, I appreciated your argument about 300 feet as the designation, especially as it relates to having a turnpike interchange. I think the balance counterargument to that though, is because we have higher density and we have more development in this area, that makes us a high consequence area, so I just wanted to point that out. My other question was for Mark. I know this is the language that we have tailored a bit from the county's recommendation, but there's also multiple municipalities that have adopted the existing exact language. Are you aware of any case law or other issues that other municipalities in Chester County have encountered when they went through these changes?
I am not aware of any specific situations that they've run into. We've, we've, you know, obviously in, in preparing this, looked at just from a big picture, when you pass these types of regulations, what kind of impacts, obviously people have thrown around issues of condemnation and other things. So, obviously, we wanted to take a look at that and see, you know, make sure we were on the, the right side of the line in doing that type of regulation, but I'm not aware of any specific situations that any of the Chester County municipalities have had.
Thank you, that's all I had.
What other townships have followed Chester County? Any local townships? That you know of, Mark?
I don't know, but it, Laura.
I have a whole chart, it's going to take me a minute to pull it up. There's several other, I know in the last meeting I'd outlined it, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
There were several other that were comparable in size and density to Euclid Township. I know there were at least three or four that had adopted the exact language, put forward by the county, by the GOT recommendations. And then there were also a couple of the, very strict, like some up to 750 feet.
Yeah, and again, I, I think that's a good point that Laura raises, which is one, one of the reasons that this board adopted, sort of tailored the county recommendations to, you know, its own languages. They already had an existing requirement, you know, the 50-foot setback, and they really weren't looking to create a whole new structure. They, they thought, despite, you know, some of the concerns, that they, they were, what they were, they were trying to be relatively limited in scope and what they were trying to do by changing really the amount of the setback from the 50 to the 300 and then adding in the consultation zone. That's really, you know, they didn't want to reinvent the wheel, they didn't want to put in a whole new program, they were just trying, so they, they took just a few things out of that county and actually didn't adopt some of the other stuff.
Okay.
Though my, my comment on this ordinance would be that it seems to me that it, it still penalizes the landowners, but it doesn't really make us any safer, which is what I think they're trying to accomplish here. I, I just don't see how, how this makes us safer, the pipeline.
Well, we, we, we could have done like 1,200 feet, but I don't think that would have, that would have gotten us very far.
Right, right, you'd have to be at 1,200 or 1,000 feet to make it safe, but.
Well, I, I think the, the, the counterargument to that is the further away you are, the better off you are and the more time you're going to have to, to deal with an emergency.
Yeah.
Um, this is Margaret Quinn. I had some questions and comments. Can I, do you hear me?
This is Margaret Quinn, I had some questions and comments. Can I, do you hear me? Yes, you were talking about, you know, the PUC and the protections and things like that and the Texas Eastern Pipeline. I think really why people want to do a setback for future construction is because really there are no safety setbacks in our government in Harrisburg. And, you know, many people have been fighting to get that through and to no avail, you know. And we really would like a setback, 1,500 feet, but we can't. So at least 300 and, 300 feet is a start. Which we have no setbacks right now and with the Mariner East, there are people sleeping 10 feet from that pipeline, you know, so I think it's making us feel better that at least we will have some control over it. And also the Texas Eastern Pipeline, right now, we know what's in it, you know, and we don't have to worry about being blown up. But you don't know if another company 10 years from now is going to come and put in, you know, another product that is dangerous to people sleeping next to those pipelines. So I think this is more of a a way of controlling what we can't control at this point. And, you know, putting people a little bit more at ease than we have been because we've had no control over safety setbacks at all. So I think this is a, you know, like a beginning and I think it would be a, you know, a good beginning for us here in Euclid Township.
But Margaret, it doesn't, it doesn't really change everything that's been developed already. It only affects the going forward, so it's really not accomplishing what you're, what you're suggesting.
It could be, you know, you don't know that what's going to happen five years from now or 10 years from now, you know. So if a pipeline, another pipeline company or Texas Eastern decides, well, you know, we want to put, we want to change our product and then there's land that still needs to be developed there. You know, you can say, well, you can't really do that because, you know, of, of the product that, that's going to be put in that pipeline. So there's, you know, it's a safety setback there. Well, if they are, you know.
That's, that's not what this policy is saying though, it's not talking about what's in the pipeline.
They could also connect it to that pipeline, they're doing that all over the place, you know. And we could say, well, you can't connect it, you can't, you know, connect that pipeline, you have to think about that too. That's what they're doing with Mariner. You know, there's old pipelines that they use and they connect them. So we might want to think about that too with this 300 foot setback. That's just my opinion. And then, I don't know, I, I just went, you know, like looking at mortgages and things like that for refinancing. Some companies will not even give you a mortgage if you have a, a pipeline, you know, on your property or, you know, some kind of dangerous natural gas on your property. So that's something else to consider. But, you know, if I were buying new construction, I would not want to be, you know, next to a pipeline either. So that's something to, that I think about. That's just my opinion.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Well, this is all about setback, but there's nothing, there's nothing anywhere, the state or anywhere saying about what product can be put through the pipe when it's close to residential buildings. There's nothing that says about the product. I mean, you could, I mean, if it was like a heating oil, I mean, you wouldn't feel so bad because you know, you'd, you'd see it seeping up. But when you have gases that you can't see, I mean, it's dangerous. I mean, we already have the, the pipes for the natural gas in, in the street. So this is a whole thing, I mean, it gets too deep. So this is, this is a start, this is something, but when you look back at it, it's really very complicated. So you might as well, this is a start.
Yeah, this, this is a start, but I think, I, I, I think from what I'm feeling of a couple of comments we're getting from the board, we still don't feel that it's.
It's not the right thing, right?
It's not the, it's, that the 300 feet's too much. And I think our feeling is, from what I'm getting from the conversation, that we're, we feel like we're hurting, we're hurting the people that still have property that's in development. And, and I think that's, I think that's more, more than what's in the pipeline or whatever. We're not, we're not taking care of people that held on to their land.
That's right, Dennis.
And it's not really making anybody safer. I, I don't see where it is.
Uh, I mean, I know, Mark, you guys are working hard to try to do something, but, you know.
Well, and listen, I, you know, regardless of, obviously I'd like to see you, you support it, but regardless of how you vote, I, I do want to say I appreciate the comments and the conversation because I think, you know, even if, if you think it's, if still a deficient product, I, I think at, at the very least, it's better than it was, so.
I, I agree with that, it's better than the first one.
I appreciate your time and effort.
I just have another question. Is this only for residential? Oh, so, so it's if you want to build a warehouse too?
Well, it's, so it's for residential, it's for residential dwellings and occupied, non-residential.
I see, so businesses.
Could be business, could be educational, institutional.
I got you. So you could use the land for other things like storage and things like that and then the pipeline setback wouldn't matter, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's right. And, and there's also, as we discussed, the waiver.
Okay, thank you.
The waiver is, is a good option also. I, I like that being added in there, if it wasn't in there before.
Well, I don't know that we, we didn't, just to be clear, we didn't add it specifically to this, but it's part of the SADO and the SADO has a waiver process.
Dennis, I took a quick look at the chart while you were talking. I, I'm happy to send it to anyone. There's a lot of really interesting info. It shows where each municipality has this tucked in, whether it's part of SADO or something else. Just a quick glance, East Coventry, East Bradford, Willistown, West Whiteland Township all have Chester County language that was adopted straight out of what they suggested. Some of the denser areas like Phoenixville actually have up to 750 feet. And then my original copy where I did a little terrible digging myself for entries that didn't have the information there were, I know there were several more on there. But again, I'm happy to share that, that file with anyone. The only last comment I wanted to make as far as like whether we can tell if this is making our community any safer, again, just comes down to density. I mean, we, Euclid Township contributed to a study a couple of years ago that had to do with risk. And it literally broke it down by feet, what the chances were of mild, moderate, severe injury, jet fire burn. I mean, it really got into some of the specifics. And it did show that the further away you are at the time of a pipeline emergency, it does make a difference. And I just think that that's really important, like to say that we don't know, we, if this makes the community safer. I think that we do know if we put 200 additional residents right on top of a pipeline easement, that's 200 residents that our emergency services have to be able to evacuate, provide medical care for. It's, it's 200 additional souls that are part of our community that we have to, that we have to accommodate for. So I just want to make sure that that's balanced and I think that you all have really valid arguments. And I've enjoyed talking about this with you because somehow I've enjoyed, learned to enjoy talking about pipelines over the last five years. But I do think that there are very specific safety things that we can see would give us some semblance of safety compared to where we are now.
But Laura, you know, considering that the township is mostly built out, it doesn't make that part of the township any safer. These last few properties that are open.
Right, but again, I mean, to, to convert some of those properties and add density there, it, it does make a difference with those numbers. We're not talking about hopefully thousands of people, you know, I don't see a, a 10-story condominium coming in to any of these, this very small handful of, of space that we have left. But like I said, I, I think that there are some instances there where we can see that it would cause safety considerations. So I just wanted to mention it, but thank you.
Yep, and, and to reiterate on that, I, I, I will not disagree that it would help safety. But I still feel it's unfair to the people that held on to their property. Cause they could have sold it 10 years ago and gotten a whopping money and they are not going to be penalized at this point for holding on to their property. That, that's really my, my main thing. Anybody else have any comments they want to add to that?
Uh, just, you know, like the farther away, uh, this is Margaret, the farther away you are too, there's less chance of asphyxiation, you know, from the pipeline too, you know, if there were to be a leak. And as far as people, you mean they're trying to sell their land and you don't think it's fair that they can't sell it? Because there's a pipeline on there? What do you mean by that?
You just took a 50 foot right away and made it 300 feet. So now you can't build in that area. So you took away their property value of being able to build closer than what everybody else did in Euclid Township over the last 50 years. And if you owned that property, would you feel right if you were told you couldn't sell it and get the most you could get for it?
For, for, for instance, the great property is, is a good example of that. If that wasn't already in development, that would, it would essentially make that a lot less valuable, that property for that older.
How about Rossi?
And Rossi as well.
He'd, I mean, he'd have nothing there.
Yeah, that would make that worthless, actually. Well, not worth, but it would make that property much less valuable.
So, so that's where I think we're coming from more than anything, Margaret, whoever's listening. It's not this, the 300 feet, that's great for safety, that, that's just not fairness to everyone, you know. Is, is my feeling.
Guys, I just want to also add, you know, a lot of properties have a lot of different issues that they have to deal with, whether it's floodplain, wetlands, you know. Anytime somebody's building close to that, they would need to get a waiver. So I think each instance, you know, would be brought in front of you guys or the board on a case by case basis regarding. So I would just keep that in mind also. And then, you know, if you guys don't have any other comments, I would suggest making a motion.
I, I have a question. I have a question for Mark. Dennis? Question for Mark.
Go ahead.
Is, is there any liability for the township in granting a waiver that turns out to be in the event of an accident? Right back on the township for violating its own ordinance?
The ordinance.
Well, I mean, if we granted a waiver with good intentions and then there's a terrible explosion in that, in, on those, where we gave a waiver to go closer to that pipeline. Is, is there some sort of legal liability there or can the township be held harmless for having acted in the best interest of that particular applicant?
I, I, I don't know the answer to the question.
I sure don't myself.
All right. Do I have any other comments, questions? Um, I don't know how we want to move forward with this. Do we need to make a motion to accept or not accept?
I mean, you could make a motion, I mean, you can make a motion to, to support it, you can make a, a motion of, you can make no motion, you could pass it on without recommendation. Or, you know, you could make a motion to.
Is there any way, is there any way you could work on it some more or do you think it's been worked on enough?
I, I think the, I think there's a desire on the part of the board supervisor to move forward.
We also have a hearing scheduled for Monday night.
So that's a pub, public hearing, correct? So it was posted in the daily local and all that, correct? But those 16 homeowners did not get a written letter explaining it, correct, right? They could be oblivious of all this.
Well, that's not good.
No, but that's the way the public notices work. It's put in, it's in the
Local anymore, Dennis.
What's that?
Nobody reads the local, very few people.
Something here, guys.
Well, when you put up a fence, you have to have, give a letter to your neighbors, staying there, no, you don't.
You do not. Unless you're having a hearing for a specific, you know, variance or something like that, then your neighbors would be notified.
Yeah, keep it, this is not a situation of a land development. This is an ordinance change. The, the only reason we're able to talk about the 16 properties is because we did some specific analysis to try and figure out who might be impacted. But it's, you know, this is an overall township-wide ordinance change. And it was published and notice was given in, in that context. But I, I do understand. Dennis, I understand your point.
All right, thank, thank you, I appreciate it. And, and you see where my, my feelings are on this. So guys, we need to, we'll either make a motion or we just let it move forward the way it is? Or a motion one way or the other, or let it move forward?
And we make a motion, Dennis, subject to cutting that 300 feet to 150, is that a possibility?
Mark, are we able to do that? That our recommendation would be that it wouldn't be 300 feet?
Yeah, I think you could, I think you can approve it with the condition that you would recommend it be 150 feet.
Correct, that's, that's our recommendation, so.
Make that motion that we approve this, subject to the distance being reduced from 300 feet to 150 feet on other side of the pipe itself.
A pipe, yeah. Rather than the right of way, correct?
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. We're going to recommend the 150 feet instead of the 300 feet.
Well, I'm, I'm a no on that, Dennis.
What's that?
I, my, I would be a no on that.
So, um, do I have any, anyone in favor?
Oh, good, one more clarification now, is it from the pipe?
Yes.
From the pipe, not the right of way.
Can be from the right of way, I don't care either way.
Okay, well, right now it says 300 feet from any existing or proposed transmission pipeline right of way.
They will then make it right away.
Okay, we'll make it right away.
Really? So, so at, at present, am I correct on this Tara, that it's from the pipe, our 50 feet?
At present, it is 50 feet from the physical pipe itself, yes.
So you're gaining an extra, whatever the distance from the easement to the pipe in my motion.
So it'll be 150 feet instead.
From the easement.
From the easement.
Which is basically 175 feet.
150 feet from the easement.
Well, I, I withdraw my second then, because I think from the pipe is better.
I recommend we pass it on with no recommendation.
I'll second that.
What was that?
All right, that was Tim. If I have. All right, that was Tim. If I have this right, so Tim is recommending that we just pass this on to the supervisors with no formal approval from the planning commission.
No recommendation, because I don't.
No recommendation.
I don't think we can come to a consensus.
All right. And that also, I, I think in that recommendation, I think it can be stated, which is in the minutes, of what we feel it should be, a lesser, lesser amount. And the supervisor.
I would, I would ask, I would like to see the minutes, because I think that's helpful information. I would like to see the minutes reflect at least some of the discussion about 150 from the right-of-way, 150 from the pipe. I think that can be useful to the board.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right. Charlie withdrew, and Tim recommends that we pass it on.
And I'll second Tim's recommendation.
Okay.
Since Tim's.
So I have a recommendation and a second to just pass this on.
All right, I'll second that we just pass it on without recommendation.
That's fine. That's fine.
All right.
What is this? I'm sorry, what, could you just clarify what that means?
So, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to step on you.
Yep, go ahead, sir.
Okay, and so, you know, the, the, the planning commission is an advisory board. They make recommendations to the board of supervisors. They can recommend for something, they can recommend against something, and they can pass it on and say we don't have a recommendation.
Oh, so now what happens?
It still goes to the supervisors, and the board of supervisors still can do whatever they want to do.
They can hash it out.
Okay.
But we, but we do want to say that, that we were in our discussion, it was 150 feet. That was one of the.
We're not in consensus on that either.
Right. But we want to let them know that we discussed it.
Okay, thank you.
So my, my wording was wrong. We are not recommending. We are just passing this on.
Without recommendation.
With our recommendations. Okay.
So we're not recommending.
There will be no motion or second or anything. This is just goes forward.
Thank you.
All right, is that properly the way you would like this, to see this?
I, I think you can, it sounded like the way you were going, which I was comfortable with, which is a, a motion to pass it on without recommendations, and then, then there's an official no recommendation.
So that's what I have. I have Tim motion that there's no recommendation because there's no consensus. Richard seconded, Nancy agreed, and I think everybody else was in favor as well.
Is all in favor of that?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, it's, it's good to get together like this at night, huh?
Yeah, just what you want to do.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, we just want to let them know somehow that, you know, about our discussion.
Correct.
That'll be reflected.
That's what the minutes are for.
Yeah, the minutes are to reflect that, correct?
Correct. Dennis, do you want to go through the announcements?
I do not have the agenda in front of me. I apologize.
I just pulled it back up on the screen. I would just say that the Board of Supervisors meeting is being held Monday night virtually at 7:30.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Before Dennis reads the minutes or reads the announcements, can I ask you a question, Tara? There's a building being built at Milltown, this side of Milltown. I don't recall that going through the planning commission. Is that, isn't that not in our township?
Milltown?
Yeah.
Not in our township.
Carter's Trailer Park is not in our.
Yeah, part of it is.
Because we did.
Oh, 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 yes. I'm, sorry, I forgot they changed their name. Yeah, so part of it is in our township. It did go through the planning commission a few years ago, I believe. It's pretty. Yeah.
Yeah, is that Loretta's? Yeah, that, we did that one, Charlie. Yeah, we approved that.
I think what Charlie's talking about, there's a new building being built right out along 113. That's not part of the mobile homes.
The front portion, I believe, is East Count.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
You're right, Tara.
All right, are we still at the meeting, or do we adjourn?
No, we didn't adjourn yet. First thing is, the announcement's where Tara said township supervisors meeting, Monday night, 7:30.
Right.
And then I need to open it up. Is there any other comments or questions from anyone?
To the public?
To the public or to the commission? Nope. Okay. I think we wrapped it up for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So now I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.